We will come and ask for input.
Okay.
Good.
Alderman Plufka?
Here.
Alderwoman Tyce?
Here.
Alderwoman Sims?
Here.
Alderman Wegge? Alderman Gould?
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Here.
Alderman Shelton?
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neal? Already did that one, okay.
Good night, sir.
Gotcha. Did I do them backwards? Oh, I got them on here twice, okay.
Got all seven.
Everybody's present.
Okay, great, thank you, Kelly. Apologize, everyone, for the temperature in this room, but, you know, it is what it is, so just hopefully we'll get through this. First thing on the agenda tonight is, under announcements, appointments, proclamations, and recognitions, we have four things, and the first is the police investigator recognition. Chief?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the few minutes that we can recognize the folks that investigated homicide that occurred here in Brentwood on May 15th of this year. I'm going to ask the following people to come forward, please, and stand over here to my right. If I miss somebody, yell at me and tell me who I've missed. Sergeant Nick Stansy from Brentwood, Officer Brian Hoppeler, Corporal Nick Lang, Officer London Brown, dispatchers. Patty, Patty, are you back there? Both of you, please. Both of you, please. Detective Sergeant Jason Simpson, Detective Tim Bone, Detective Rick Litschke. The rest of these folks are from St. Louis City Police Department. Detective Brian Davenport. Brian's in the Real-Time Crime Center downtown. The following detectives are from St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department's Intelligence Division, Kevin Corcoran, James Wilcox, Jim Thayer, Anna Kimble, Matt Tessero, and Marcus Alston. Did I miss anybody? Okay. On Saturday, May 15th, 2021, Brentwood police officers responded to 8780 Eager Road at the Bonefish Grill for a call for shots fired. Upon arrival, Sergeant Nick Stansy and Officer Brian Hoppeler located the victim deceased in the parking lot from several apparent gunshot wounds. Later investigation revealed the victim had been shot nine times. Sergeant Stansy, Corporal Lang, Officer London Brown, and Officer Brian Hoppeler did an exceptional job of responding very quickly, securing the homicide scene, preserving critical evidence, securing witnesses, coordinating with the assisting agencies, and communicating with our crime scene personnel. As part of this initial response on the night of the murder, and I've listened to these radio logs a couple of times myself, part of the success of handling the homicide scene was due to the dispatchers. Patty and Patty to my right over there. Paul Joker says here. Paul, are you close? Paul from ECDC Dispatching Center is here as well. The Greater St. Louis Major Case Squad was activated to investigate the homicide. Detective Sergeant Simpson, Detectives Litschke and Bone were assigned the case as major case squad investigators and worked tirelessly along with the members of the major case squad to conduct the thorough investigation. As the case progressed, it was determined that another homicide occurred within one hour of the Brentwood homicide inside University City's jurisdiction, and the two incidents were linked through ballistic evidence. Hours of diligent interviews and with help from the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department's Real-Time Crime Center, Detective Davenport, surveillance review revealed a vehicle description, license plate, and suspect descriptions in this homicide. The suspects were seen buying narcotics in North St. Louis City just after the murders, and interviews with additional witnesses revealed a key piece of evidence in the case. With this evidence, the detectives coordinated with members of the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department's Intelligence Division, specifically Detective Kevin Corcoran, James Wilcox, members of the United States Marshals Service. They're also assigned to the, I believe they're still in the intelligence unit down there. Still assigned to intelligence, but they're with the US Marshals. James Thayer, Anna Kimble, Matt Tessero, and Marcus Alston, who ultimately identified the suspects in this case. On Monday, May 18th, 2021, following a pursuit and violent encounter with South Carolina law enforcement, the female suspect was taken into custody. Several days later, after an exhaustive manhunt, South Carolina law enforcement located the male suspect and took him into custody. The suspects were ultimately linked to several more violent crimes in South Carolina and Tennessee, including three additional homicides and several shootings. Detectives Bone and Litschke, along with other members of the major case squad, flew to South Carolina to interview the female suspect, and then later drove back to interview the male suspect. Both suspects made full confessions to their crimes here in Brentwood, as well as to their multi-state violent crime spree. Detective Sergeant Simpson was instrumental in the coordination between agencies at the local, state, and federal levels. His years of experience and vast expertise was critical to the success of this homicide investigation. The St. Louis County Prosecuting Attorney's Office charged the suspects with a total of 14 felonies to include murder first degree, assault first degree, and armed criminal action. Sergeant Stansy, Corporal Lang, Officer Hoppeler, and Officer Brown with the Brentwood Police Department have earned department awards of excellence, along with St. Louis Metropolitan Police Detectives Davenport, Corcoran, Wilcox, Thayer, Kimble, Alston, and Tessero. Want to do those now? We're going to hand those awards out. Go ahead, Angie. Thank you. You can handle them.
Thirty-two more. Thank you.
It'll be a short meeting, anyway, so we're good. Detective Sergeant Jason Simpson, Detectives Tim Bone and Rick Litschke of the Brentwood Police Department are awarded the chief's letters of commendation. All of you that received an award, can you gather in front of Detective Davenport over there so we can take your photo, please? While they're gathering up real quick, I've been doing this for a long time, many more years than I'd like to admit at this point. This was a great investigation by some of the best investigators I've ever worked with. I've worked with everybody in this group, so it was a pleasure to watch. It was a horrible incident, obviously, for all involved on the backside of it, but they did a great job on the investigation. Congratulations.
Hey, Dave. Can I say one thing just real quick?
Thank you.
Yeah. Alderman Plufka?
I just wanted to add to that, to say that, Chief, I watched you on the press conferences, and you made the city very proud in the way you conducted yourself and how you conducted those press conferences. They were professional, they were informative. It was, it was great to see you do that, so thank you very much for that as well.
Thank you. Can't believe nobody wants to stick around for the next part, which is the reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Board of Adjustment, and Architectural Review Board. You have in front of you members of the board, the names of the folks that I would like to reappoint, and so with that, Planning and Zoning Commission, going to be reappointing Rebecca Jacobs, Jeff Moore, John Ritter, and Lisa Shearing to the Architectural Review Board for two-year appointments. It'd be Matt Foreman, Paul Turner, and Carl Carlin. And the Board of Adjustment to five-year appointments, Keith Slusser, Jared Balent, Kristin McDaniel, Ryan Marshall, and two alternates, Sue Kaiser and Scott Stinson. So if we can take that all in one matter, that would be wonderful. You want to make a motion to approve those appointments?
Motion to approve.
Second. Great, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have an appointment to the Brentwood Public Library Board of Trustee, and the person that I am nominating is Beth Miller. You have her resume in front of you as well. This came to me from, it was a recommendation from the library board itself. So with that, I would also entertain a motion to appoint Beth Miller to the library board. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And finally, under announcements, we have a proclamation Parks and Rec Month. Eric, are you going to take that, or I guess I'm doing that?
He can read it.
Yeah, why don't you come on down and read it.
Kevin?
So July is Parks and Recreation Month, which is obviously very special to me every month, every month, every year, you know, so we do have a proclamation for Parks and Rec Month, and then I'm hoping to get the same standing ovation that the police department got. So as, whereas the Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout the country and including the city of Brentwood, and whereas our Parks and Recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring that the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic, environmental, well-being of the community and region, and whereas Parks and Recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are intellectually or physically disabled, and also improve the mental, emotional health of citizens, and whereas Parks and Recreation programs increase the community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction, retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas Parks and Recations are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas Parks and Natural Resources areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetation buffers, development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our Parks and Natural Recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas US House of Representatives have designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the city of Brentwood has already recognized the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation. Now therefore, Mayor David Dimmitt, by the authority vested in him, and on behalf of the Board of Almen hereby recognizes the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Brentwood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing. We have a public hearing to discuss the estimated allocation of $20,000 in community development block grant funds available after January 1st, 2022. So with that, I will gavel open the public hearing for that matter. Anybody care to speak to that? Now is the time to do so. And so with that, we will gavel the public hearing closed. Next on the agenda is the agenda approval, item five. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Alderman Lockmiller?
I was just going to point out that we seem to be missing the...
Oh, Steve, if you, I'm sorry.
I'm on.
Is your mic on? It's on.
Can you hear me now? Okay. The compensation bills, 6333, I think it was, 6334, and 6335 that were supposed to be taken up, is this out of courtesy since one of the Aldermen isn't here?
Well, that and the fact that I'm not going to be at the meeting next month, and so I just decided to put it off, push it off until September.
The September meeting?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? Okay. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda by acclamation?
No move.
Second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It will be approved. Next up, citizen comments. Anybody in the public care to address the Board of Aldermen? Now is the time to do so. You'll be given up to three minutes.
There's no one in the gallery.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I take that back. Someone has raised their hand.
Okay.
Karen Smith has raised her hand.
Sure. Karen Smith, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Karen Smith, I live on Harrison. I understand that you're going to be, I don't know if you're going to be voting on this, but you'll at least be discussing, I saw it on the agenda, an opportunity to retain an area that has a house on it, or originally four houses, back to residential, it's now planned development, and would like to encourage you to consider voting for this. When the comprehensive plan was done a couple of years ago, they tried or wanted to move the, I guess, line for commercial development along Brentwood Boulevard further back in, like, my neighborhood, and, you know, people were upset about that, and we, you know, went to a couple of meetings and expressed, you know, our desire to keep as much of Brentwood residential. We've had a lot of commercial and retail development in Brentwood already, and we're a small community, and we'd like to be able to maintain our residential character. And so they didn't move it back any further, and I'm not sure why or when this particular area was changed to planned development, but it is an area that, you know, if it does have development on it, will be approaching back into the residential areas. And I know that Planning and Zoning voted for this to be maintained or retained as planned development. You know, it is interesting because I know at least one of the members of Planning and Zoning, there was a development that was proposed for the area that this person lived in, and it was going to be approaching back into the residential areas, and, you know, this person was against that, as were many other people in that neighborhood. Now, I think some of it had to do with the type of development that was proposed for that area, but nonetheless, the message loud and clear was is that, you know, the area wanted to maintain as much residential as possible. So I'd like for you all to please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, just come on down and just state your name. Excuse me, and your address.
Hi, my name's Kelly Reese, and my address is 8837 Powell Avenue. I'm actually here for the same reason that the other lady was. The house 8817, which is the residence that we would like for it to be zoned back, to be residential B, is just down the street from me, and I'm here on behalf of myself and a couple of my neighbors who couldn't make the meeting as well, but we strongly encourage you to really consider switching it back to residential B. It's in the middle of our street, it's a residential neighborhood. We understand that it's close to Brentwood Boulevard, and therefore the last house on the planned development area, but it's part of our neighborhood. We would love for that to be back to residential, for it to be subdivided into two new homes built. We have a lot of rental property on the street right now. I have the five homes across the street from me are all rental, both sides of me are rentals as well. The people don't maintain the yards, you know, bare minimum maintenance and whatnot, and we would love to have two new families, homeowners, with brand-new houses that would belong to our community and our schools be built, and so we would strongly encourage all of you to really consider taking it back to residential. I mean, there's no planned urban development there right now, and what better use of that lot than to become a decrepit house or potentially another rental that's not maintained when we could have a developer develop it into two new homes? We'd love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. We will move on. Next item is the mayor and Alderman reports. First up is the mayor. He, I have no report. Alderman Plufka?
No report.
Alderwoman Tyce?
No report.
Alderwoman Sims?
No report.
Alderman Gould?
Yes, the next Ward Three meeting will be Tuesday, July 27th, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Alderman Lockmiller?
I'd just like to thank staff for all the hard work that was done, and Davy Tree for, during the storms we recently had. I know, I agree. I know fire and police are out there, and our public works, as well as parks, and thank you for that. Also, Public Safety will meet, let's see, Wednesday, July 28th, right here at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Shelton?
No report.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes, a couple items on the library board. First, the library board meeting will change to the second Tuesday of the month, beginning in September, so anyone who would like to visit is, has to change that date. And the second is that we had mentioned that the library director has been elected the president of the municipal library consortium. If you can get hold of the pulse, there's an excellent synopsis in there of the history of that and what's involved, so please look it up. It's a two-year term for her, and involves some responsibility and some good goals, and its dates are pretty well in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the city administrator report. First up is the Brentwood Bound update. Craig?
Good evening. Craig Schlitter with Navigate Building Solutions. I'll be providing the Brentwood Bound update. So before I go into my normal update, just a couple items. The GRG Connector and the Event Lawn Comfort Station are going out to bid tomorrow, so that's an exciting milestone, so we'll take bids early August, and we'll bring those recommended contractors to you all in the board meeting in August, which will allow, with your approval, construction to start on those remaining projects. Going into my typical update, so total spend since the last Board of Aldermen meeting in the construction cost category was $153,947.50. Going to soft costs, total spent since the last meeting was $227,260.49, and that was on material testing, flood mitigation, GRG connector, and playground design and engineering, project management fees, environmental consulting, real estate appraisals, legal fees, Union Pacific Consulting, MSD connection and maintenance fees, and redevelopment consulting. The last category is property acquisitions, and $60,000 was spent since the last Board of Aldermen meeting. Going to the bottom, the categories of funding, the city received $123,619 from the GRG reimbursement agreement, and in the additional funding sources, the city received two additional rent payments from their tenant over in the Breckenridge Industrial Court, and those were the updates.
Any questions for Craig? Okay. Thank you. Next up is item 8B, open invitation to view progress of the Brentwood Bound site.
We should. So at the Brentwood Bound Task Force meeting last week, one of the task force members, Stu Clark, had an idea he wanted to bring forward, and I believe he should be on the phone and should be able to talk about it.
Hi, how you doing?
Hey, Stu.
Hey. Yeah, we had the Brentwood Bound Task Force meeting, we discussed, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, we discussed the renaming of the park, and I think it was almost unanimous everyone there, really thought that the idea of using the term Brentwood Park really made a lot of sense, because it's going to be such a big part of who Brentwood is and what Brentwood is going forward, and it was just going to make it a lot easier, so like Kirkwood Park, we really felt like that Brentwood Park was important. The Norm West Park, we thought we could retain Norm West somewhere in the park with some other naming options for facilities, but we certainly want his name also to appear somewhere because of his generous gift. So that was just kind of on the naming side, but then we started to talk about, you know, trying to keep the citizens up to speed on what's going on, because they can drive down Manchester and look down there, and they see a lot of activity. So one idea that was floated was that we have a meeting up there, specifically right behind Ace Hardware on their parking lot, looking down on the site, and just so that people can come and view the progress. We thought that August 6th, on Friday, would be a good time to start that. We could fire up a barbecue, serve some hot dogs, and just really invite any citizens that are, want to know what the heck is going on with Brentwood Bound to come, and if we could then repeat those meetings every couple of months, we could kind of get in front of some of the confusion and some of the misinformation that's going to come out inevitably these days about what's going on down there, and who's profiting, and what's going on, and what's going on. So we're just trying to, that's the idea I was trying to pitch today, and that is just a regularly scheduled meeting onsite, so people can look down and see this unfold in front of their eyes and ask questions at that time.
Great, thank you.
And so if it's something the board wants to move forward with, we could work with Westlake to see if they would allow us to use that property, and then work on food and whatnot. You know, we might try to keep Stu's promise of doing a pig roast. We think that'd be a lot of fun. Hot dogs would be easier, though. So, you know, so I think, you know, we go that route and see how it goes, so I think this is informational, and I don't know if we need a recommendation from the board to move forward with this.
Yes, we'd like to know if the board is in support of doing this. I mean, the nominal amount of money that the city would spend to continue to educate, I don't know that we would recommend that we do it monthly, but at least we do that, given there still remains a percentage of the population that are unaware that the Brentwood Bound project is ongoing.
Okay. Do we need a formal motion, or just a...
Yes.
Sure. Okay. Anyone want to make the motion to go forward with the open invitation on August 6th? Alderman Gould?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I think it's a great idea. I think anything we can do also to make sure that we document it and put out videos on social media, photos, that way people who can't join still have the benefit of hearing and seeing what's going on. And I do think a, you know, every six months or a quarterly kind of thing would be a good idea, so I'll make the motion that we move forward with the open invitation, viewing the progress of the Brentwood Bound site on August 6th.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? Okay, rule call, please.
Alderman Plufka? Alderwoman Tyce?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal? Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Motion carries by vote of seven to zero.
Great, thank you. Next up is the renaming of Norm West Park. I think Stu kind of stole your thunder there, Eric.
He did. He stole a lot of it, but, you know, so obviously the task force did recommend unanimously to name the park Brentwood Park, and then to rename the current park either the Athletic Complex or Sports Complex. And so again, that's done in a lot of places. Fenton does that, Bridgerton does that as well, so, I mean, it's not uncommon to do something like that. We'll discuss this at the August Public Works meeting. We brought it as an update tonight. If the board wanted to take this up under consideration, and then we could announce it at that August 6th meeting, so we could do either. It's just whether the board wants to move forward with anything.
Alderman Lockmiller?
I'll make the motion out, we go with the recommendations of the task force to rename Norm West to Brentwood Park, and then I guess at the discretion of our public works director, what to rename the old Brentwood Park to either the Sports Complex or the Athletic Complex.
Second? Okay. Any further discussion on that? Right now, the motion is just to move forward with the renaming of Norm West Park to Brentwood Park. Alderman Gould?
I will, I will say that I do appreciate Stu's comment about maybe some consideration of honoring Norm West in the park somewhere, but I do, I do... of honoring Norm West in the park somewhere, but I do, I do think that making this a, a key place for Brentwood is, is good to have it be Brentwood Park. And then, you know, at your discretion on the, on the Athletic Complex as well.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal? Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Motion carries by vote of seven to zero.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is amending the municipal code for the Architectural Review Board selection.
Thank you, Mayor Dimon. Back in 2005, the Board of Aldermen approved a bill that became Ordinance 3968, amending, creating and amending the Architecture Review Board. And since then, staff has had the challenge of being able to find residents of Brentwood who can be appointed or who shall be appointed by the mayor with the consent and approval of the majority of the board to serve on the Architecture Review Board. The ordinance, when it talks about composition, appointment, terms of members and qualifications, states that three of the regular members of this board shall be licensed architects. Currently, of the four members and two alternates that should be on this, on this board, we only have three. So at any meeting, if one of them is absent, we are unable to have a quorum. And that happened last week. It happens infrequently, but when it does, the applicant is significantly upset. You all may have received calls from the applicant from last week, and so I know that there's been talk about reconstituting the ARB, possibly consolidating it with the Planning and Zoning Commission, but until that is done, what I'm attempting to do tonight is to propose a temporary solution. I have talked to architects who don't live in Brentwood but work in the city of Brentwood, and they have volunteered to assist the city. So if the, if the Board of Aldermen would be open to that suggestion, and we would come back at the August meeting to codify that in the code, to be able to go out and find those architects who, who can be of assistance to the city so that applicants aren't left waiting, that's really the purpose of this presentation.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of the city administrator? What's being asked here? Do you need specific direction from the board to bring something back to us, or?
If we know what kind of legislation we want to see, we'll prepare. Away with the requirement to be architects. Measure how good they're tasting.
Right. Alderman Plufka?
So, just so I'm clear, I understand the notion of wanting to expand the pool to architects who work but don't necessarily live in Brentwood. Are you also talking about expanding the number on the board?
No, not at this.
Because I thought one of the problems was that if we miss any one particular person, we lose quorum immediately.
Right now, the code says there are three.
And right now, we only have three. I got it. Thank you.
Yeah, so we're just trying to find some more people to, to fill out the board. Alderwoman Tice?
Yeah, I think this is a great idea. If this had happened at my house, I would have been completely crushed, so thank you for looking at this and look forward to seeing the legislation next month.
Yeah, I think we should bring some back to the board in August on this. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the compost update.
Good evening. This is pretty straightforward. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but if you recall, we received up to $7,000 in reimbursement, grant monies from the Department of Public Health with St. Louis County, and that was to purchase compost tumblers and the little kitchen stainless steel pails. So in '21, we did purchase those items. We delivered those over the past three weeks, so a total of 55 of those were transported out to different residents. So far, I think everybody likes them. I need to put together the paperwork now. I know we've spent a little more than $8,000. We had to buy stickers. You could either hot stamp them or sticker these, and stickers were more cost effective. So the folks got these 37-gallon dual-stage tumblers, the stainless steel pail you see in the pictures. So far, I think it's pretty successful, and there's another round of grants coming through for Department of Public Health. So we can submit again on this if everybody's happy with it. That's good through the end of August for the submittals, and then we'll hear back probably a month or so later based on past experience getting this passed one. So I'd like to offer it again next year to say another round of 60 or 70 homes, and if it's successful, we would just keep doing it year after year. Typically, I'll get money for recycling carts, but we have plenty of recycling carts in stock, so this gives us another option as far as getting some free money. That's it.
Any questions for Dan on that? It's purely informational. Okay. Thanks, Dan. Lastly, under city administrator report, is the Brentwood, Brentwood Backyard Bash, FKA Brentwood Days.
Yeah, so in the weekly report, we, I put something in last week's weekly report about what we're calling the Brentwood Backyard Bash. Staff felt it was probably a good idea to change the name for this year because we didn't want people to confuse what we're doing with Brentwood Days and expect the typical Brentwood Days. And then obviously, my staff loves alliteration, so we went with the BBB. And so the idea of this is to really just program the heck out of stuff for kids, starting with the Japanese drummers, the St. Louis Psycho Organization, who is wonderful. They'll do a show followed by a 45-minute demonstration. Then we have a kid's stage with a sword swallower, a learned, you know, learn magician type show where you'll, you'll see a, see a bit of a magic show, and then you'll learn some magic as well. Excuse me. And then, you know, just some jugglers and other things, and then also what we're calling now the Kitty Corner, we changed that. So face painting, balloon artist, charactrist, all those type of things. And then ultimately, we'll have some inflatables for the kids to, to jump around on, and also what we're calling kind of the mobile area, which will do stuff like the gymnastics bus so kids can go in and do some fun gymnastic things. And then we're also getting a video game bus for maybe a little bit of the older teenagers and maybe even possibly the parents to kind of have some fun with. So we're still trying to sprinkle in some other things. We're talking about things we don't want to announce yet if we don't have them ready to go. But the goal is to keep them busy while parents enjoy some food from the Brentwood Boosters, the Brentwood School District Booster Club, as well as maybe a beverage or two from Barley Vine and Drink. We'll have the seating area for you guys to kind of relax and lounge in. Something I'm terribly excited about is the interactive tables, so they're just walking tables. You can put your drink down, you play a little blackjack, get a tarot card reading, just something a little kitschy and fun for adults. And then finish up with Hudson and the Hoots cats, a fire, a fire show, and then the fireworks. So it is a jam-packed day, starting all with the parade.
Great, sounds fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, we're excited.
Yeah. All right, folks, that brings us down to the consent agenda. Any questions about any of the items on the agenda? Chair, would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda then?
Second.
We got a motion by Alderman Plufka, seconded by Alderwoman Tice. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal? Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Great, thank you. Item 10A, Old Business, we just have the one item, and that is Bill Number 6327. We need a second read. City, city administrator, can we get a second read of Bill 6327 by title only, please?
An ordinance to rezone certain property numbered 8817 Powell Avenue from PD Plan Development Overlay District to B Single Family Residential District.
Great, thank you. Are we having a presentation on this, or are we just, John is?
We can, we can.
I don't know if we need, I mean, we had one the last, at the last meeting.
I think there might be just continued discussion.
Yeah, so any questions? Otherwise, entertain a motion to perfect Bill 6327 into ordinance form. Alderman Plufka?
Can I ask a question before we do that?
Sure.
Just to make sure I understand, the ordinance, the recommendation from Planning and Zoning was not to allow this to be rezoned back to residential B, but the ordinance, as it's presented, presents an option to do that. That's, so voting in the affirmative would be to vote to return it to residential B.
I'm looking to our city attorney for that, yeah.
The ordinance is introduced to grant the application that has been filed. That's what you have been requesting, Stu. In addition, general order is that legislation is affirmative. Motion should be in the affirmative. It can either be read or denied. So if you own the property, you vote aye.
There you go.
If you wish to, if you wish to retain district designation, you will vote no.
Good?
Yep.
Okay.
I just want to make sure everybody is on the same page.
Sure, sure. Alderman Lockmiller?
Well, do we need a motion? Are we still discussing?
You can still discuss.
Okay.
Well, obviously, I'm in favor of the rezoning of this property to residential and the possibility of it being subdivided into two homes. In the staff report, there's a bit of an error when it refers to the, this area being in the 350-foot swath of redevelopment, which is the town center. This is actually in the south gateway area, which is not in that, that swath, that right away. So I think having this transition as people turn off Manchester onto Brentwood of two beautiful homes instead of some large commercial area right there would be more attractive as they're moving northward on Brentwood Boulevard. Also, this area has been PD Plan Development for over 30 years, and yet nothing has happened. No one's assembled properties to create a commercial development in that area, and I think having this as homes would just be more of an attractive setting for that street in particular. Thank you.
Alderman Plufka?
I, I agree with Alderman Lockmiller, especially his last point. I, I'm a firm believer in the idea that the marketplace can, can take advantage of the, the zoning that we provide to develop it, you know, and they'll, they'll use the rules of the marketplace to, to see whether it happens or it doesn't, and I think one of the indicators that maybe this is a good idea is that it hasn't happened in more than two decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes, I, I, what you say about it hasn't happened is so true, because I remember being on the comp plan in 2006 and talking about keeping a distance there, hoping to attract commercial businesses that would have adequate parking. It's not happening, and I would, yes, very much like to see residential homes there that would be attractive to the area.
Anyone else? Alderman Gould?
Make a motion to perfect this bill and to allow the applicant to, to redistrict to, back to B Single Family Residential District.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion to perfect Bill 6327 into ordinance form. Any further discussion on that? Roll call?
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Wag, oh, sorry. Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Brings us on to?
Oh, yes, perfected into, I apologize.
No worries.
I was in a hurry. It's perfected into Bill number, ordinance number, I'm not sure what the number is, I'll get it for you.
Okay, thank you. Brings us to New Business, Bill Number 6337. Can we get a first read by title only, please, Mr. City Attorney?
Number 6337. Offered agreement to the Italian Chief Training Officer. Development Fire Fighters Paramedics and other personnel.
Great, thank you. So Chief Cottrell isn't going to handle this for us?
Evening, thank you. This is a very big deal for the fire department. As you know, the last five years, we've participated in this agreement with the cities of Clayton and Maplewood. This agreement, we bring on the city of Richmond Heights. Richmond Heights has approved this as an ordinance as well as the city of Clayton. We would be the third municipality to agree to it, then the agreement is enacted. So we do have training scheduled for next week, so we do request a second reading if possible.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Can we get a motion for a second read?
So moved.
And we've got a motion by Alderman Lockmiller, seconded by Alderwoman O'Neal, for a second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Can we get a second read of Bill Number 6337 by title only, please?
Number 6337, second reading in consideration for adoption of ordinance to every, division with the Italian Chief Training Officer dedicated to.
Great, thank you. Chairman, entertain a motion to approve Bill Number 6337 into ordinance form?
Your Honor, I move to perfect Bill 6337 into ordinance form.
Second. Got a motion by Alderman Plufka, second by Alderman Shelton. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal? Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Okay, by a vote of seven to zero, Bill 6337 has been perfected into ordinance.
Thank you. Last thing on the agenda, citizen comment, once again, if anybody in the public, sure, John, cares to address the board, now's the time to do so.
Not a citizen, but I.
That's okay.
I wanted to say something that I think's important for you all to hear. When, when we tried to pick up primarily Adam Jones and I from, from Lisa and what was in progress at that point, we could not have done this without help from Bowla and Eric and Dan and Kelly and anyone else who, when, you know, we started trying to help you out here, it was sort of, oh, my God, because we hadn't been part of the chain of events, and I just wanted to say that we've really appreciated their help, and I think things are moving along now at a, at a, at a less disjointed pace. But again, thanks to all of those folks. They've been a big help to us.
Well, thank you to you and Ed for jumping in and helping us out when we were, while we're shorthanded. So we, there is a, anybody else? I'm sorry, any other citizen comments?
No comments.
Okay. So with that, we do have a request to go into closed meeting pursuant to all three or is it just the third one? B and C, okay, pursuant for both real estate and personnel pursuant to RS MO 610.021 subsections two and three, and to adjourn therefrom.
So moved.
Second. We got a motion to go into closed session pursuant to those sections by Alderman Plufka, seconded by Alderman Gould. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal? Alderman Shelton?